Good evening, everyone. A call to order. The meeting is Little Falls Planning Board, March 6, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Barry, will you please lead us? A flag salute.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America, the judiciary public, for which it stands. I'm a nation under God, in whose role we're liberated and just as well.
Thank you, everyone. Valerie, will you please read a statement of public interest?
Thursday, March 6, 2025 is called for order. Please pay notice that notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with NJFA, ten home four dash eight and NJSH ten home four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting will promptly posted on the open board at municipal building located at 225 and H Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 9, 2025. A copy of the notice is sent via email to the Norton Thursday Herald and News on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the office of the township court. Please note that this meeting is being taken from the outside of these big mountains and into the microphones.
Please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Gagnano.
Here.
Mr. Tabo.
Here.
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 Mr. Gagnano.
Here.
Mr. Tommies Gobba.
Here.
Here.
Go on.
Here.
Mr. Moreno.
There.
Mr. Grizzly Dorrell.
Here.
The home was.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Council President, are there any comments for the planning board from the council?
No one. Chairman came before the governing body at the last meeting. Our next meeting will be coming is this coming Monday.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of January 9, 2024? One vote for the reorganization in a regular meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Gobba?
Yes.
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 Your man?
Yeah.
Chairman votes yes. Minister approved. There are no resolutions to memorialize. On the agenda tonight, our first item is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the housing element and fair share plan addendum number one to 2024 master plan of the township of Little Falls. I want to call on our new planner, Mr. Barry, to explain what this is all about.
Chairman else will with the bow.
Sure.
I'll give you further stories. I'm here to achieve the whole team of the number of different.
I do. So, good evening all. John Barry, professional planner and planner for the township. Happy to be here and thanks for having me. The matter that's before us this evening is a relatively simple item. I know the board is aware of the history behind all of this. It has to do with the three developments that were approved at 115 Main Street, 215 and 201 Route 23. Collectively, those three developments had affordable housing obligation that was left somewhat open. And as a result of some back and forth with the court and the special adjudicator involved with the township's housing element and fair share plan, we, the township came to a settlement to resolve the housing issues. 10 affordable units would be set aside within the 115 Main Street building. The, and then in addition, the redeveloper, the developer of that project also made a contribution, will make a contribution of $200,000 to the township's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We had a hearing on this matter a few weeks ago in Passaic County Court with Judge Del Sardo and reviewed the matter both with the special adjudicator, myself and counsel for the developer and the township. And as a result, we were directed to prepare this update to the housing element and fair share plan in accordance with the settlement that's been agreed to. And all this is doing is updating the numbers in the plan to reflect that these 10 units are being provided at the 115 Main Street site and that the $200,000 contribution is being made to the trust fund. And that's really it. Other than that, we're just putting a bow on the history of this, these applications and the process that we've gone through, the township's gone through to resolve the outstanding affordable housing requirement for the applications. And with the adoption of this housing element and fair share plan addendum, we would basically put to bed that whole host of issues and pretty much call to end the third round of housing for the township.
Thank you. Any questions for the board members? They're being done, may.
So, Mr. Barry. So what is, what you presented to the board tonight is what has been presented to the court?
The, there was a draft that was presented to the court in advance of the hearing. This, the only update that's come since then was to attach the final version of the settlement agreement and the judge's order in the matter. But otherwise, it's, it's the same.
But so what we're doing tonight is in accordance with the order of the court, which was entered, I believe, on February 7th.
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Again, any questions to the board from Mr. Barry? Hearing them, may I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Meeting is now open to the public. Any member of the public wishing to address the board, please come forward. No one coming forward, I close the meeting to the public. May I have a motion to approve the amendments to the housing element for the fair share plan addendum number one to the 2024 master plan of the township of Little Falls? Motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please poll the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
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 Chairman votes yes, it's approved. One application tonight, 11 Walnut Street?
Chairman, the mayor and myself will be excused because we only get to hear applications on fences and pools, so yes.
That is absolutely correct.
No fencing, no pools.
Chairman?
You may.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. John Vedery entering my appearance on behalf of the applicants, Jimmy and Paulina Gerose, John Vedery, 3 University Plaza, Suite 207 Hackensack, New Jersey. I believe, well, we have half of my client's family, the other half maybe in the hallway. And while we typically don't bring the applicants up, the applicant would like to make a short statement. I'm going to give a little summary first and then the applicant would like to make a short statement about his, the request this evening. The applicant, he will tell you, have a, have a growing family. They've lived in the town for about 20 years. Love the town like lots of other young couples, impossible to find another home within the confines of the township. And they do love their home and would like to add on to the home to accommodate their growing family. We've seen these applications before. So as the planners pointed out, you know, it's the burdens on us to establish that this is a D2 variance, not a D1 variance. And what's the difference? So D1 variance would speak to, it's a full use variance. We can't establish that there, that this is a legal, non-conforming use. So we've seen these application. There were lots of two fami-, well, not lots. There was, there were many two families that were built in the township, probably at the turn of the century, late 1800s, 1900s, this being one of them. So this home, according to the tax records and the Sanborn maps, was built around 1910. That's fully before the establishment of the zoning code that would have barred two-family homes. So the home exists as a legal two-family. So I believe that we have the legal authority to be asking the board this evening for a D2 variance, not a D1 variance. It's a lesser, it's a lesser D variance. And if you look at that neighborhood and we looked at everything in between Stevens Avenue and Center on both sides of the street, every single one of the homes, they're all two families with one exception, with the house directly across the street that backs up to the parking lot of the Civic Center, I think it's 14 Walnut Street, that is a, that's a one-family, was built as a one-family. This, we understand, just based on the configuration to the home, and the architect will speak to this, was built as a two-family. And now we're seeking some variances, including the expansion of that. We've had these applications. I looked in my record. I think the most recent one that we had was the Leitner application, which is almost identical to this one, which was a two-family on Sindel Avenue with an expansion of that property. There have been others that go back further. I think 72 Lincoln is another example.
Counselor, can I, can I just ask our planner and our attorney if they agree that we're looking at a D2 variance?
Certainly.
Mr. Barry?
Well, based on the, the representation provided, that the construction of the dwelling predates the adoption of the zoning code and presuming that it's been used as a two-family since its construction, if.
Do we know that for a fact, that in 2010 it was built as a two-family?
In, yeah, 19, yeah, 1910. According to the court, tax records are not always the most allowed. Usually I find that the homes are older than that, but the house, the house was there. I looked in the Sanborn map, so the house shows that it was there in the 1915 Sanborn map. So it's, that's probably right. I don't believe it was in the older one, the 18 something. I could bore everyone and try to look it up, but I don't think it was in the late 1800s map. So that, that date is probably correct.
Okay.
So with, with that representation and I believe we could all go check the Sanborn map if we wanted to. I'm confident that, that we can proceed with it as a two fa-, a D2.
Mr. Grizzly Dorrell for the record?
It's currently been used as a two-family.
Currently being used as a two-family, it's been used as a two-family by the prior owners and for the last 20 years.
20 years?
For the last 20 years that my client has owned the property.
Okay.
That's been utilized as a two-family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so in addition to that, we have our, our C variance is that we'll speak about and, and one of which actually the engineer has pointed out that we don't have. We'll get into that. So, so we're going to go over the, the plans. We have an architect here with us that actually has been responsible for the design of lots of homes in Little Falls, yet he's never appeared before this board. Mr. Messick designed all the homes at Mountain Top, a great notch, as well as I think a couple on Sally Jane Court and also a couple on Woods Road. But I guess as they were, you know, originally done, maybe by other architects at the, at that time, he actually has never appeared before this board, so we're be happy to have him here to answer any questions of the board and explain the plan. So with that said, if it pleases the board, I would like to call my plan up. Jimmy Gerose and.
Get someone in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're up before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please spell us your name and spell your last name.
My name is Jimmy Gerose. It's J-A-R-O-S-Z. So my statement is, I visited many towns when I was looking to purchase a home. I fell in love with Little Falls, the, the town. The home that we were looking at was very historic, the charm of it. And then as he and my wife grew, so did our family, and over the time, our son James is planting roots and going to school. He's in third grade in town. Our daughter, who is three, will eventually be going and we want to squeeze in one more child while we have the opportunity. So, living in a, a small two-bedroom on the second floor, we've grown out of it. We need the space, so we love the opportunity to keep the aesthetics of the home, keeping it looking like the historic colonial that it is, while also having the ability for our, our family to, to live and grow in it. So that would just very much thank you for having me the ability to speak and hopefully will allow us to expand, renovate the entire house, keeping the same aesthetic view of the neighborhood and also helping out my family.
I'm going to leave now. Jimmy, there are five. Thank you, Jimmy. The board have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's jump right in. Our first, our first witness is going to testify in the area of architecture and also will speak to the site plan is Tom Messick.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please spell us your names, spell your last name.
It's Thomas Messick. Last name is M-E-S-U-K. Sure. So I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I hold 39 architectural licenses throughout the country. My license in New Jersey and all the rest of them are in good standing. I graduated architectural school nearly 30 years ago. And yes.
I offer as an expert in the area.
I will not ask if his license is because we accept.
I've appeared before many boards and like John said earlier, I have yet to appear before this board and I've done probably more projects in Little Falls than any other town in the country at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, people give, give an overview of the, the existing property and the plan, the proposed addition to the property is also speak to the site plan, which was.
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to go off the, the Z1 sheet first, the first sheet in the set. In the upper right corner, we do have the. That's correct, that's.
After your edification, we just received these plans this evening.
So the upper right corner, we have our site plan, shows the existing structure of the existing house and then the proposed garage in the, the rear yard. The garage that's existing, we are looking to replace that garage with a new garage. And the new garage is slightly larger than the garage that was there, primarily because the garage that was there, the, it was built a while ago. The doors were smaller, the garage itself was smaller. And getting cars in the garage and being able to get out of the cars was a challenge in the existing. So we are proposing a 22-foot by 22-foot garage. And in working just to
to put me through the variance, so, so that does become a variance, as the engineer points out, because the garage is actually coming forward toward Walnut Street, keeping the same line that it's in now, but it is coming up, it's an expansion of the setup. Current set, we current zoning code, it's six feet, three feet, it's ramped up and in, but was there, we are expanding.
Will the garage be higher?
Sorry?
Will the garage at two levels will be higher?
No, it's just a, a one-car, a one-story, two-car garage.
Nothing on top?
Nothing on top. But, you know, as John was pointing out, the existing garage does not conform to the six-foot setbacks for the garage. What we were looking to do as well is square the garage up to the house, so, and it also aligns with the edge of the driveway. Right now, it's a bit skewed. And the front corner and the rear corner would be, both be three and a half feet off of the. One other point to bring up while on the site plan is the impervious coverage. The existing impervious coverage and I know that.
There's also 200, 240.
40 square feet of the neighboring driveway that encroaches onto this particular lot. That addition adds 4.3%. So our number of, for our proposed impervious coverage at 64.3% should be 68.6%. That's also noted in the engineer's report. Again, the, most of the impervious coverage is existing. We are slightly expanding that with the addition of the garage. Moving on. So on Z2, the second sheet in the, the drawing set, we have three floor plans. So we have a first floor plan. And these are all proposed plans, the, the second floor plan and the attic level or third floor, you know, for the, the existing dwelling. So the first floor is the one family and that they're looking to do some renovation on the first floor to modern, modern, more, yeah. Sorry, it's been a long day. To bring this, you know, apartment kind of up to date, second floor, we're looking to expand the, the, the living space as Jimmy had mentioned with their growing family, they need the extra space. Right now, everything is contained on the second floor. The proposed attic level plan would give them a new suite towards the back of the property and two bedrooms towards the front. Bedroom sizes are, you know, they're not overly large, they're nine-six by 12. So they're very, you know, comfortable for the existing houses in the neighborhood.
Well, this is, we confront this issue before, we don't have a variance for height, we're well within the height of 31 feet.
Correct.
35 is permitted, but we have a variance, let's take this point to that according to the number of stories. The calculation is not just the simple one half of the core area below. So maybe you could explain to the board why we can't comply with that.
Oh, okay.
The impact that it would have on doing this addition and we're complying with a limited grant with a number of.
So we, we did look at that in terms of the, what John had just brought up. Currently, and part of that, you can see better on the next sheet. But the, the existing attic space that's there now, with that and trying to comply with the half-story, we would have enough space underneath the existing attic framing to get two very small rooms up there and we can't even get like a full walk-up stair. Yeah, that's code compliant to work with that. So that's what we were looking to do was to increase the square footage of the attic level. And because it's over the half-story requirements, it becomes effectively a third floor. And that's one of the, the variances that we do need. And as John pointed out, we're only 31 feet in height where 35 is required, so we are still under the, the height requirement in terms of feet. The side walls, we would have a, we're looking to raise the side walls to a four-foot-high knee wall. The dotted lines on either end, that shows where the, the sloping ceiling hits five foot six. So even though we are raising it, the upstairs rooms would not be a full eight-foot height. We'll just have down the, kind of the middle of the, the rooms would be where we would achieve eight feet. Moving to the Z3 sheet. On this sheet here, we can see where the existing roof is and our proposed roof line, moving that line up four feet. We are looking to increase the pitch slightly so that we can get a little bit more head height in there. And you can see here in the center, that's the only area that, you know, we would have full ceiling height. And then it rapidly slopes down to be at the four-foot mark at the, the side walls. In looking, you know, at this addition and like the other houses in the area, this isn't really out of scale for the, the neighborhood. We are only raising, you know, the roof a couple of feet, the four feet, you know, at the side walls. Just enough to get that ceiling height and some workable space on that floor.
Speak to the elevations that everything is so done, renovated, through siding.
Right, so as John is pointing out here, all the siding will be replaced, all the windows will be replaced. It'll be a full renovation to, you know, bring this house up to current standards and it'll be a new, fresh look for this particular property.
Are there any plans for the garage?
The garage plans haven't been fully developed yet. They're just, we know it's 22 by 22 feet. And we will meet the height requirement for an accessory.
John, can you go on record stating it's only one level?
Yes, so the, there will be no, no height variance. It will only be one level. It will be no, I don't, but to my knowledge, there's no second story at all located, you know, half-story or otherwise, just a one-story, two-car garage that will be slightly expanded, coming out towards Walnut Street to accommodate the cars.
Can we discuss storm order management?
So there's no, no real impact yet. We're not required to under the.
You're going to have new leaders?
Yes, yeah. So there'll be all new gutters and leaders, but the, there'll be no requirement for a new dry well. The, the entire, where the grass is is staying, where the garage is, there's driveway right there. So there's really no new impervious coverage that's being created.
There's an issue with the other side of sharing. Can you address that at all, just, just for our knowledge?
Yeah, it's something that was there. It's a historic encroachment. So the, if you're facing this property, the two-family to the left, their driveway encroaches on this property, has from, for probably.
1910?
I don't know about 1910, but it's probably been a lot, it's probably been, as long as I can remember, I've seen that driveway that's there and they don't, they have a prescriptive easement in the law because it's been so long, like it's adversely possessed at this point. But, and the applicant isn't looking, has a very good relationship with the neighbor, not looking to make any changes on that.
Okay. Any questions of the board members?
Do we have a location for the air conditioning unit on the exterior of the property?
I don't think it's on the plane. We may have to add it to the plans.
They are putting central air in. There's no, currently no central air, but they will locate it in an area not requiring a variance.
Also, we cover, requires fencing or if not fencing.
Rubber, rubbery.
Okay. Any?
Thank you.
Any additional question?
One more question. On, on page one, bike garage, you have existing walkway to be removed. It's a very small area. I don't understand what it means to remove. It's on the right side all the way up. Are you going to repair it? Are you going to put plants there? What, what does it mean to remove? When you look at the garage, it's, it's on your upper right?
Yeah, so I guess. I believe that is just mulch and. Yeah, the applicant is saying it is concrete.
Also, another question, I'm sorry. And then, I believe, third floor, what, what's on the third floor right now? Is it the petrol or is it?
It's just attic space currently. There's, there's stairs to get up there, wooden new stairs, because right now the, the roof pitch is too low to have a fall, right? Regularly wash.
Are you moving the chimney? The chimney coming down?
It does look like the chimney will be moved and the, the red vent appliances, you know, we need.
That sounds like it appears. Can we ask Mr. Gerose if he's moving the chimney? Um, that sounds like it appears. Can we ask Mr. Gerroz if he's moving the chimney?
Good point. It's a fireplace.
Can you come a little closer to the...
Yeah, there's, there's a fireplace that we're just gonna convert to just a gas. It's a chimney for the exhaust for all the furnaces that's going down, so we could open up the floor plan.
Chimney moving?
The chimney for the fireplace is staying, the chimney for the exhaust that's through the middle of the house, that's being removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional question? Nope.
Could we get a commitment from the owner to, uh, commit to never convert the sec- the third floor to another apartment?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yes, I will commit to never turn the third floor into apartment. There's no access from the outside. We have to do it from the inside, so...
Yes. Sometimes when children grow up and they want to have their own space, uh, apartments are converted. All right.
That's a great, that's a great answer.
I promise.
That's a good answer. Any additional questions or comments? Any comments from our planner?
Just, uh, a couple quick questions. Um, I know we don't have finalized plans for the garage, but is there any intention to have utility service to the garage besides electrical?
Electrical, um, right now it's manual, so we have to lift up one side, the other garage door doesn't work, and we can't close it once we put the SUV in. So we just want plumbing, just electricity, so we can open the garage and close it, just the lights. Right now there's no lights.
So, no plumbing, that's the key. Thank you. Um, and do you have to take down any trees to accommodate the, the modifications?
We don't have to take any.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Cobular, sir engineer?
Just the clarification, there is a slight increase in the, uh, previous coverage. Improvements, obviously, the, uh, a little over two hundred square feet, so it's clear, very...
We need to see variants. Uh, very well. If there are no further questions from the board, may I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is now open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the planning board, please come forward. I guess you already addressed the planning board. Okay, uh, no one coming forward. I close the meeting to the public. Any additional, uh, comments from the board? Mr. Brigley or Duro, can you summarize?
Sure. Uh, so the first variance that's required is what we call D two variance, uh, which is for an expansion of a existing non-conforming use. And basically, under the Burbage case, if you have a lawfully created pre-existing non-conforming use, if the board finds that it cannot be eliminated, the board is supposed to, uh, seek to harmonize the use with the environment. In this case, the applicant is talking about the aesthetic improvements to the structure, to keep it, uh, consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, there are the additional variances, there's C variance, there's some pre-existing non-conformities in regard to uh, improved coverage. For the existing non-conformities lot area, where nine thousand square feet is required, one thousand six hundred eight feet is proposed, lot width, seventy-five feet is required, forty-four point five feet is again existing and proposed, and front yard setback of twenty-five feet is required, and nineteen point two feet is existing and proposed. There are new variances. One is in regard to the number of stories, where there's a maximum of two and a half stories permitted, three stories are proposed, but even though going, even though the applicant is going to three stories, it still meets the height requirement in terms of feet, thirty-one feet where thirty-five feet is permitted. Variance for maximum improved coverage, where sixty percent is allowed, and sixty-eight point six percent is, uh, proposed, and, uh, maximum building coverage at twenty-five percent is allowed, and twenty-nine point three percent is proposed, and then the variance for the location and setback of the accessory structure, where six, where six-foot setback is required in three point five feet.
I think the only thing, uh, modification I have to that is I, I thought that the building coverage was no longer a variance.
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, so you mean the twenty-five percent?
Right, okay. I think we were taking, we'd be, uh...
Considering...
Considering, yeah, I think, right.
Okay.
That, yes, that's fine.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
May I have a second? Any discussion?
Just foul the three, so this is the variant, so you're going to say, okay, I'm sorry, the motion again?
Approved.
No, I understand that. Who made the motion? Who made the second?
Motion was made by Charlie. Who made the second? Mike Poshes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The fever?
Yes.
Yes.
Gratty?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, the application is approved. Good luck, enjoy it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jimmy.
On further business, is there any old business? Any new business? No bills have been presented. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is now closed. Thank you very much, everyone.